It is now eighteen thirty-one, one eight three one, on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I will now call this meeting to order. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ray Van, are you wanting to speak now or at? Okay. Teri Goodlow.
Hello, Council. Great to see y'all here. I wanted to speak on a couple of things. First of all, I read something today that I thought was apropos, and it talked about great leaders. And it said, walk the talk, communicate in a way that is chill, understanding, and no drama. Be the beacon, keep the energy up, and always serve a good dose of hope. And I appreciate you all in the communication that Misty's been putting on. Social media weekly is awesome, and I'm proud, and I appreciate all the work y'all have done. I just want to let you know that. And I trust, and I think that's a big, I hear a lot of transparency word. I don't like that word, because I think the better word is trust. I don't need transparency, because I trust that you are going to make the right decisions for the stakeholders in our community, the people that live here, the people that work here, the people that have businesses here, that you're looking out for the best interest of those people. So, thank you. I also wanted to address, last month, their last meeting, spoken, speaking about lots and replating. And I think something was mentioned about larger lots. And being in the mortgage business, I think there is a lack of affordable housing here. As much as I don't want to see apartments come to our city, I think those are a necessary evil to being able to have housing for people that can't afford a one-acre lot. And I think if we look at enlarging the requirements of the lot sizes, you're going to put a tax burden on the other people here, not to mention an increase in the cost of housing for people to be able to buy. So, I just wanted to vocalize that. We need affordable housing more than ever here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodlow.
Greg Cooper. Sorry, thank you. If you could hold my time, I'd like to pass something out real quick that I'm going to refer to. Thank you. Well, I'll call this one Blue Folder Number Two. So, a lot of this, you won't be able to follow along. I'm speaking on six A today. Some of the information in here might be relevant to six A. Tonight, I'm going to request your action regarding the Godly Police Department and its leadership failures, politicization, and inability to follow ordinances and law. I have passed a blue folder to you, and I'm asking you to investigate the four exhibits I have laid out in it. Exhibit one, it refers to an open records request I submitted approximately seven months ago. I requested a total of eleven items, received some but not all. The concerning missing documents were official meeting minutes confirming all police officers and entering mandatory documents into official city records, official copies of mandatory commissions, which are required before all Godly officers are supposed to begin working as Godly officers, and official copies of surety bonds and the receipts that the thousand-dollar fee has been paid for by the city. These may exist, but they're not being filled via open records, and there are coming back no responsive records. I was informed all locatable records had been delivered to me. All the above ones were missing. This is concerning, because the Godly City Ordinance mandate these. I have discussed this with your police chief and his lack of familiarity with the city ordinances. The city has seen the council confirm new officers and have seen the council do so retroactively. The chief's failure regarding the following of the ordinance is unacceptable, inexcusable, and grounds for removal is chief. Exhibit two highlights a massive culture of corruption and the fact that Godly Police Department has been politicized and is weaponized against citizens. I was hoping that a change in the council would change this. It has not changed it, and in exhibit two, we'll detail that for you. Exhibit two point one details city administration refusing to allow criminal complaints to be investigated regarding child safety and suicidal ideology management. Exhibit two point two supports exhibit two point one. Exhibit two point three details city administration using the Godly Police Department, specifically Chief Cantrell, as a weapon against citizens for political gain. Exhibit two point four details Chief Cantrell's inability to lead objectively and without bias, resulting in the impeding of possible criminal investigations. Exhibit two lays out a longstanding culture of corruption and the weaponization of your police department against the citizens. Drastic changes are needed, beginning with the chief, either removal or administrative leave pending the investigation. Exhibit three, this highlights more weaponization of the police department, furthermore supporting the culture of corruption that is rooted in. In my opinion, this may very well be criminal. It cites inconsistencies with date-time groups and basic facts regarding the arrest warrant affidavit that suspended Jen Thompson's constitutional rights and violated her civil rights. It lays out a case that the interviewing officers, Arbuthnot and Templar, are either at the least disorganized, incompetent, and incapable of accurate affidavit writing, but at the worst, criminal. Review this blue folder, so you can draw your conclusions based on the facts. Exhibit four, this highlights Chief Cantrell and possibly Sergeant Arbuthnot's inability to process possible criminal complaints correctly. At best, they're incompetent, disorganized, and lack the ability to process time-sensitive matters. At worst, it supports exhibit two regarding politicization and weaponization of police. All police should be upheld to the highest of standards. They should be ethically beyond reproach, and objectivity is mandated. Chief Cantrell has been with the Godly Police Department since two thousand fourteen, Sergeant Arbuthnot since two thousand seventeen. The culture of corruption is ingrained in their being. It is unfortunate and a product of the former administration and elected officials. But these officers should not have been beyond reproach. They are mentoring your younger officers. Those new officers deserve better mentorship. You're hiring from the academy, and this is who they're learning from. Godly deserves better, too. I'm asking for them to be placed on immediate administrative leave, pending an investigation at the minimum, at the maximum, to be removed from their official duties. Texas Local Government Code two-two-point-oh-seven-one defines the marshal as the municipal officer. Texas Local Government Code three-four-one-point-zero-two-one defines the marshal as the de facto chief of police. Texas Local Government Code two-two-point-zero-seven-six and two-two-point-zero-seven-seven clears the path for his abolishment and removal for many of what these exhibits will show. On page one of the blue folder are questions needing factual responses. They refer to city policy, ordinance, and are allowed pro toma, and staff may respond, too. I was hoping Chief Cantrell would be here to answer those questions. I have emails to back all these up. I can't put everything in documents and print it all out, and there are some audio recordings. If you need more information, let me know, and I'll be more than happy to send to you as many of the emails that back this up as you need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Ray Van, would you like to present yours now?
Thank you, Council. Do I need to do anything with this microphone, or are we good?
It's good.
Okay, very good. My name is Ray Van. I'm with Raymond K. Van and Associates. In February of two thousand twenty-one, we submitted an application for the Community Development Block Grant funding to the Texas Department of Agriculture, and this was for citywide valve replacement, water valve replacements that would benefit the entire city. I have, am I under, I have five minutes, is that correct?
You're under presentations, you're good.
Very good. If I may, if I can pass out a couple of little packet of information. I'll go through this really quickly. I shouldn't take much time. I think I could do this in five minutes if I need to. I've attached my card there in case anybody would like more information regarding this grant. If I could, if I could ask you to turn to the first page, and this is a portion of your grant agreement with the Texas Department of Agriculture. One of the key things that I want to highlight tonight is the first item highlighted, which is that this grant began on March first of two thousand twenty-two, last year, but it ends on February twenty-ninth of next year. That seems like that's a long way away, but that'll be here very quickly. There's a lot to be done with this grant. As you can see, the grant amount that was applied for and has been approved is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a local match, a cash match of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. On page three is specifically what the grant is paying for construction-wise, which is the installation of sixty-seven water valves, including valve reconnections and all associated appurtenances, as well as administrative costs and engineering costs are also covered in that. On page four is a timeline, and I'll explain a little bit about this. The grant contract actually began on March one, two thousand twenty-three. However, y'all didn't get a contract until May of, excuse me, March one, two thousand twenty-two, but you didn't get a contract until May. That being said, we kind of started a little bit behind the ball. Not your fault, it was just what happened with the state. They outlined some thresholds that they want us to meet, that they suggest we meet. I want to go down to that third one there, which is environmental review, plans and specifications recommended to be complete by September one, two thousand twenty-two. We handled the environmental review, and that was completed by that time. We submitted it actually in August of last year, and y'all received authority to use grant funds on, I believe it was September seventh of that year. So, that was met. Where our delay right now is in the plans and specifications. Your engineer, Glenn Brysh, I've visited with him many, many times. He's indicated that for many months, and I think maybe even back to last year, he's had difficulty getting the information he needs to complete the plans and specifications. Very specifically, you have those sixty-seven water valves out there that are different sizes. He's said that basically, without having those sizes, he can't go out to bid. He can't finalize his plans and specs and go out to bid, because whoever bids on it won't know what sizes they're bidding on. And so, he needs that information very desperately in order to finish this. I'm here tonight, and actually, I was, had planned on being here a couple of months ago, but I had sent a message to the then-city secretary without realizing that she was in a transition out. So, anyway, I'm here tonight to kind of sound the alarm and say, we really need to get that information as quickly as possible. We've done a lot on this grant. We've, there's a, there's a packet A, group A forms that are all your civil rights, all of your bureaucratic red tape that goes with these grants. Not that civil rights is something to scoff at, but it's, it's, it's some of the things that may not appear to be tied directly to water improvements, but it's something that they asked us to do, and there was a large group of documents that was passed last year. But now, we're at the point where Group B, if you see here, they suggest that, and that this be done by March first of this year. Well, Group B is basically the documents that you turn in to say, okay, we've bid this out, we've awarded, we've started construction. And as you can see, that was March first that it was suggested that this get moving by, and we're not near that point. If we were to go out, if the engineer were able to complete his plans and specs today, he would still have to advertise for bids. That has to be in the newspaper for two weeks in a row. Then you open bids, then you, he reviews the bids, he brings it to council. Thank goodness, y'all meet twice a month with a recommendation. Council approves it, and then you've got another month of the contractor getting together there, bonding and all of that, and having pre-construction conference before we actually start construction. So, right now, as it sits, if, let's say, the end of this month, he had that information, we're still a solid two months out before we're able to start construction from the end of this month. And that's just kind of cutting it very close. They will extend this, or let's put it this way, they will entertain an extension request. However, we have to show that there were circumstances that, that, beyond the city's control in order for them to do that. Y'all may or may not be able to with the resignations and what have you. I don't know how they would look at it. But the bad thing is, if we request an extension and it's granted, then the next time you apply for a grant, you get points taken off for requesting that extension. So, we don't really want to have to extend this project, and again, that's why I'm here tonight. Again, the contract ends on February twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-four. That's when all construction has to be completed by that time, and then they give us two months to get the closeout documents in and collect the final funds. In this packet, past the contract part, the contract goes through, oh, if you could turn to page seven, this just gives you a breakdown of, highlighted what's actually available for construction funds. The total construction amount, including the cash, cash match, is going to be two hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So, that's what, what the engineer has to work with. This should be doable. One of the concerns is obviously the increase in pricing for supplies, construction. Things have gone up a lot. They're starting to settle down a little bit, but we won't know until we go out to bid on it. The next page is just a map to show you where the water valves are that the engineer had, had put together, those little red marks there. Gives you an indication of the water valves. I went ahead and put on the next page your resolution that was approved for the application back in April of two thousand twenty-one. And I highlighted there that the, the council designated the mayor, and this is by title, the mayor and the mayor pro tem as chief executive officer. So, since you have a mayor pro tem here, we'll have some things that we'll need to have done through that particular capacity. If you'll turn to the next page, there's another resolution that designates who does what, who can sign what. So, the designation was the mayor, mayor pro tem, and city administrator. Again, by title, not by individual, is able to Again, by title, not by individual, is able to execute related contractual documents. So again, the mayor pro tem would have the opportunity to sign any contract once we bid this out. The next item is irrelevant because the environmental review has already been completed. But then the third item is that the mayor, mayor pro tem, city administrator and city secretary is authorized to execute our requests, the request for payment forms. I don't know where y'all are with your city administrator or city secretary, but it does require two individuals to go into the system to make these requests. So y'all may want to consider, and I can bring back a new resolution if you feel like you need to change it for right now to a, to the mayor pro tem and a council member to do that. You can certainly do that if that's what you need to do. Again, I don't know where y'all are with the, the whole staffing situation, but we will need to to do that. There is a system, an online database that, that the mayor pro tem will have to have access to, and also the person that y'all designate will have to have access to, to go in and authorize pay requests. And the way this grant works, you don't have the funds, I should have said this in the beginning. The funds aren't sitting in the bank waiting for you to spend them. They're still at the state. As invoices come in, we submit the pay request, the state sends the money, you have five days to get those money, those funds dispersed. So if you get a pay request from the initial contract for a hundred thousand dollars, send that in roughly anywhere between two weeks and four weeks later, the money comes in, then you have five days to get it dispersed to that contractor. But, but it's pretty, pretty cut and dry. We've got the most out of it, out of the way of the bureaucratic part, but we do have a little bit to do in getting y'all signed up, getting two people signed up in that database. I've said a lot, I've thrown a lot at you, and I'll pause right there and, or stop and see if you have any questions.
On the map where you go all the valves?
Yes.
Do we have to go dig each one of them, look to find that out, or can we go from our previous, this was a two-inch line, there's a three-inch line to the valve for that?
I do not know the answer to that. That would be an answer for, a question for the engineer or your public works director.
Have you, by looking at this, have you looked at this map?
I've looked at that map.
Do you know what the size of most of these?
I do not, they were not.
I have looked at that map. I do not have any documentation whatsoever in public works that shows the size of any of those or the lines. It was not properly kept before. I've contacted the engineer. The engineer doesn't have document, documentation of it either. So what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to go in and dig up every one of these valves just to find the sizes, cover them back up, and then hope that this grant gets started on quickly. Because if not, then, like, I know there's a valve right out here in this concrete parking lot. So we don't have the resources to dig it up and reconcrete it and then dig it up again, pull it out, replace it, and then reconcrete it again. So everyone that we dig up, there's some in streets, there's some in grass, there's some in concrete. So I mean, we could dig all these up, but whenever they get put back in, it's going to be put back in with gravel, dirt, and cold patch or rock asphalt. It's not going to be concrete again because it's going to be dug up just right afterwards to get them replaced as well.
I know we did a survey like this in the, in the, we did a survey on the, on basically this part of town on the sewer and the water system. So we have it, it's just we didn't save it.
Do you have any further answers to any of that, of like digging up driveways and parking lots and?
The, the key thing is going to be the timing on it, and that's a definite problem because, again, as I said, assuming the engineer has everything ready to go except he's plugging in the sizes. If, if all of that got to him by the end of the month, we would be one full month of bidding out and of the procurement process, and then another month of getting bonds, insurance and all of that. So that puts us into, what, November in starting construction? And that's a best-case scenario. That's assuming we get bids in that are good, that we don't have to rebid for some reason or anything like that, which again, these days, the way the economy has been, we, we don't really know.
Do you have to dig up the valve itself? Can you not dig up the line that is on each side of it and say, okay, this is a two-inch line, so there has to be a two-inch valve?
Well, the problem with that is, is like on one-seventy-one, we got some sewer connections that go from bigger to smaller. So we could dig up, let's say in a grass area, about twenty feet from where the valve is. We could dig that up, but then we're just assuming that it doesn't shrink down or get bigger before it gets to the valve. So I mean, it's not going to be precise as digging up the valve.
What's the biggest valve size we have out there that you know of?
Biggest one I know of, I believe, is an eight-inch or ten-inch.
What's the general average size?
General average size for our water valves are going to be typically two to four inches, what most of them are going to be. But like I said, I mean, some may be older than others. You know, I, I can't, I won't know unless I put eyes on them, to be honest with you. And I mean, I'm not, in something like this, I wouldn't want to be a guessing man on this because this involves people's drinking water, and that involves TCQ if anything gets messed up. So all that being said, it is a public safety issue, so it's not going to be a quick go-go-go-go-go. We're going to have to make sure that we're doing everything properly. We're going to have to make sure that we're not hitting anything or messing anything up because, I mean, like I said, we hit a pipe wrong or something, then all of a sudden we got a pipe bust, and then if it gets rock or dirt or something in it, then we have to put out a boil water notice. So I mean, it's, it's not going to be a quick issue. It's going to be something that's going to take time and manpower to do it. So it's not anything I could just rush, rush, rush through.
And when this grant was started, I don't think we took into consideration that these doors on the city hall would be closed for almost six months. So that really put a, probably a damper on, on this.
And I think we could argue the case, but, but if there's any way we can get it now, I will say this also. On the valve sizes and your engineer really needs to make this decision, but, but from a grant perspective, if we were to come in and you had some where you were uncertain of, and you had to make an, not a guess, but an educated guess on the sizes, and that was wrong when they bid it out, we can change order. We're not, we're not set. We, we can change order. There's flexibility in the grant to say, okay, we bid X number of this size, and we really needed four more. So we change order in, cost a little more, it's within the grant, hopefully, depending on how the budget is. But we can change order up or down as necessary within twenty-five percent of the total amount. So that gives us quite a bit of flexibility if, if the engineer is okay with that.
Does this grant allow us to bring in any contract labor, anything to help find all of those valves? And if we don't have the manpower?
That's not specified in the grant, no. It's actually not.
Just the, just the valves?
Right, just, that's right, replacing the valves.
We could hire our company to come in, find the valve sizes for us. That way you're able to keep going and doing what you're doing.
Well, that's what he's saying, it doesn't specify.
But it couldn't fall under the grant.
Don't say you can or you can't, right, we'd have to pay for that ourselves.
That, oh, absolutely, yeah, you can do that, absolutely. Now, and I don't, I may be stepping out of line, but you have, I know y'all had an allocation of American Rescue Plan funding, I don't know if that's still available or not. If it is, we may, that may be a good use for that. And if y'all need to talk about that some other time, we can visit about that.
And what, what is that, American what?
American, it's ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one, CLF RF. I think y'all were allocated about three hundred and forty-one thousand or so. And that money actually, I'm assuming, has been deposited in two different deposits.
Yes, but we've received both trenches. I think we spent a hundred and sixty thousand for SCBA's for the fire department, and then we gave one-time bonuses to city employees during COVID. So I think we have like a hundred and seventy thousand left.
Kevin, you'll laugh at me, but is it not the case, am I thinking incorrectly here, that there are sonar devices that can be used in certain cases to that, you know, you're not that far down, that you can measure?
I don't know if sonar could be used to measure. I know it could be used to found, to find, but I'm not going to lie to you, I don't know if it can measure. I could look into that and find out. But there is also another method that can be done to figure out these sizes of these valves, and that's by turning them. But the problem with that is, is you turn it and all of a sudden it comes to a stop. It could just be jammed, there could be a rock in there. So I mean, there again, it's not one-hundred percent accuracy. So therefore, honestly, I wouldn't use that on a fact like this to where we need to have sizes. But I just wanted y'all to know that there is a way that we could do it by turning the valves. But whenever we did the hydrant replacement up at Fifth and Graham, we ran into that issue. We tried closing the valve all the way, it wouldn't close all the way, we couldn't move it anymore. We still have live water coming out. So that's another reason why I would not suggest doing the count per turns and figuring out the size of the pipes for the valves because it, it can get stuck.
You're, you're obviously replacing those valves for a reason because they're in very poor condition. I understand the, the issues.
You can bid it as a cert, all of being a certain size, four-inch valve, bid that, put it in the contract. Any sizes below this, we get this much money back. Any sizes above this, we pay you that much more money. And don't wait for a change order, you get it in the original contract. We have one, then we know how much it's going to cost us. We don't have to worry about the, oh, those valves are now this much because that's how those contractors make money, a change order.
That's very true. But, but hopefully, the, the idea in the change order would be that, let's say you have a two-inch valve, a four-inch valve, a six-inch valve. You determine that those are your sizes, and you find out that you need more of the four-inch valve. Well, they have already supplied a unit price on those four inches. By the grant, they can't increase that unit price. They can increase quantity, but not the price itself. So we would still be locked in even in that way. But again, that's more of an engineer area that.
We need to get Glenn to sign off on it, just tell him what you do without digging them up and without going out and doing the whole investigation.
And he has to look at it, make sure that it meets the two CFR two-hundred procurement laws and all of that good stuff that goes with the grant as well, so. Because if we don't do that right, then you don't get the money.
We do it, and we don't need to tear anything up while we're doing it.
Very good.
What do we do? Is this information?
On the, I don't remember this valve being in there, the one that's next to the railroad tracks. Do we even know where that's at without, because I mean, you s-
Yes, sir.
You start digging next to railroad tracks, I mean, that could take months to get right-of-way privileges and.
Yeah, I don't know, I can go up.
A few inches and a few feet, and you can get an actual machine that'll tell you what's four inches of it.
But if we're in the right-of-way, we're going to have to get right-of-way privileges.
Railroad clearance and everything else. So, I mean, I can't tell you if it's there for sure unless I go put eyes on it tomorrow. And then with that, I don't even know if I've got to get railroad clearances to be on the right-of-way that close to the tracks.
If it takes too long, we'll just pay for that one ourselves rather than lose an entire grant.
So do we have to do all sixty-seven of them to abide by this grant?
No, we can amend the grant if we need to. If we needed to amend up or down, that's not a big issue. Yeah, they, they, but we will have to submit an amendment request for that.
If that particular valve you're talking about is in the way, we need to go ahead and leave it there for right now. Move back into a location that we can access, period, put the new valve there. And then when we get the approval to work on the track, air, on the railroad property, then all we got to do is put a sleeve, take the valve out, put a sleeve there, and where we need to be.
My concern is that's the, probably the emergency line over to JSU, it's main line. So if our wells go down, then that's how we get water for the city.
We don't know that yet though, right?
No, I mean, but it's in the approximate location that line would be because it hooks in right there at Del Norte.
That makes sense.
There seems to be two in line with each other there.
Yeah, it looks in line with it, looks to be in line with the one that hooks up JSU. But I mean, that's not saying that we can't get JSU to also team up with us if that is, and at a later time we go in and replace it. I'm sure we can get JSU and we team up together and make sure that we're able to get it knocked out.
So this was just a presentation, but we definitely do need to do something if we're going to use this grant.
So if we wanted to bring in contract labor to do this, is it something we need to put on the next agenda? Because with what we currently have working, is our staff that we have able to pull this off and the time allotted that we're going to need? I mean, this is something, we've got to move quick.
I mean, you've, we've only got one backhoe, you can only dig up one valve at a time. I assume that some of these are multiple feet down.
Oh, yeah, all, all these are going to be at least eighteen inches deep. And with that alone, we also got to give it, since it's not an emergency, we got to give eight-one-one a two-week window to come out and locate the utilities all around before we can even put shovel or anything in the ground.
We need to go ahead and call them out tomorrow to do that. But I'd rather not dig it up, period. I'd rather just work off the assumption, X number of these, X number of these, X number of these, within the contract, how much the individual, if we're off, how much is it going to cost us? That way we don't have to, we don't have to do any digging, we don't have to spend any money. All we got to do is say this, go bid it.
So if we do that, there's only a twenty-five percent variance, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
That's a pretty tight squeeze of trying to guess.
Well, how much you going to spend?
Yeah, if we don't get the grant.
Kevin was saying, what happens if we bust something? How much money are we out then? Yes, it may end up costing us a little bit more money because we need a couple of eight inches we didn't know about. But I'd rather pay the eight inches and have six, have, you know, six blocks without water.
And that's still three hundred and eighty, three hundred and ninety, seven thousand five hundred? Whatever that was that we've got, even if we go over the twenty-five percent and have to pay a little more, it's, at least we've got that much. Seems like it's an all-or-nothing deal here, and we're on a big time crunch.
I'll visit with, with Glenn about some way of working the bid that way because there have been things very similar to that. The only concern that I have is, is we've got to somehow get a quantity in there so that the bidder will know that, that we have a significant number so that we don't get somebody that says, oh, I can do that, you know, thinking there's fifteen of them or, or something. And also, we've got to make sure that the, the bids are competitive, that they're fair, that they're, everybody has the same information and that they have accurate information because you might have, and this is really on these federal grants, they look for things where, okay, this contractor A may not have bid if he had known this, but contractor B maybe knew this and contractor A didn't, and therefore it wasn't fair, and so there's a lot of issues with that.
So one, I think one of the questions I have too is how do, if we've not looked, like dug to find these, how do we know all these locations? Where did those locations come from?
Well, that's an engineer's question, I, I know.
That's what I just asked Kevin. He, Kevin's happy if Glenn says they're there.
I can't, I can't tell you that they're one-hundred percent, all of them were down there. But I can tell you that each one that we went to so far, that he has shown us on the map, that they're spot on. So I mean, I'm, I'm pretty confident in the engineer's abilities on marking.
Oh, no, I'm confident in that. I was just wondering if we haven't like put eyes on them, how we knew exactly where they were, but I guess.
They, they may have done that whenever they installed them. And that's another thing, whenever I go over my deal, we've talked about later as well. But I'm pretty sure they put a location on where every valve had to be at for everything put in. Because that's, that's part of the engineer's specs that they've got to do.
This is from him, I mean.
As well, you know. As well, you know, um, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
So even though there weren't great records kept in public works over the past, I mean, most of them kept it in their head, and they were good at it, and it worked. Um, whenever Atmos came through town, a lot of it was GIS mapped, and Glenn has a copy of that. So I assume that's probably how a lot of this is done.
So there's around plus or minus sixty, it looks like, or so.
Yes, sir. And the grants for sixty-seven of them now, my question about that is, is if we only have fifty-eight to say sixty-two, can we get extra valves to put up, or does it have to be exactly in the ground?
Yeah, it'll have to be in the ground. At the end of the grant, um, everything you do has to be tied to an actual benefit. Um, and they don't consider storage of materials or equipment as a benefit under this particular grant.
So the final decision on locating these are... What, we've talked about different ideas, what's the final?
I, I think y'all, a- again, this just being presentation, I'm not sure you have an action item to discuss, but that's...
Yeah. I know saying action, I just don't, if we're planning on putting it on the next council meeting or...
At the next council meeting, I would like Glenn to give us a guesstimate on what we need, so we can then turn around and vote how we want, so we can then vote on his recommendation. He has to come to us with a recommendation that we need X number of this, X number of that. Or hey, well, I can't do this, you just have to go dig them up.
So does it cost us anything for them to come out and mark lines?
Eight-one-one is a free service.
Are they goin', all these on public property, ro- in the road and stuff?
Not all of them are, but they're all in a right-of-way. If it's gonna be in somebody's yard, it's gonna be in the right-of-way. So, I mean, either way it goes, eight-one-one's got to be called to locate. And we've gotta give them two weeks to locate from the day I call them, before I can put a shovel in the ground.
So I agree, we should hear from Glenn, but I would also like to give you direction to call eight-one-one and start that process.
Yes, sir.
Whether we do it or not, I mean...
And if it hurts for a little bit, right now, they'll go away with, with the marine.
When we get them done, take some pictures of them, well, you're usually wrong.
Yes, sir.
And store them somewhere.
Exactly, yeah. Utilize that free service to make note and have a list of those for future reference.
Dean, you're itching to talk.
Yeah, I turned it on, but I, I think y'all have probably answered the question. I mean, the step, stepwise, I think Roger hit it head-on, you know, with the federal regulations. I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna be looking at, an engineer comes out, does the professional services, and then this is your traditional bid, and then do the work. So we need to make sure we're consistent with federal guidelines on competition. But it sounds like we're, I guess we're over the, the minimum threshold for three hundred thousand?
Yes, uh, yes, for sure.
Yeah. So you just, you need to go through a competitive bidding process. Engineer is the first step.
Well, engineer has already-
To build out the scope of work, right.
And the engineer has already been procured, so we're, we're good in that area.
And if you wanna use ARPA funds, we can talk about that, however we need to.
That's the same thing.
Competitive process required.
So what if we decide to use ARPA funds to do contract? If we have to dig these up, then that needs to be a RFP too?
Yes, yeah, right. If we're gonna expand ARPA funds, we need to go through, I mean, assuming that it's gonna be a project of this scope. And it's not a, just a de minimis expenditure, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Appreciate you very much.
You'll have my contact information, feel free to contact me anytime.
All right, and you as well, we'll, we'll kinda catch up tomorrow with it.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all very much.
You have a good night. Thank you, you too.
Item A, discussion and possible action regarding lawsuit Jennifer Thompson versus City of Godley. That'll cause number three, two-three, dash CV, dash one-four-one-one. I'm gonna guess Jennifer's not here to say she wants it in the open. So at this time, we'll go into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, consultations with attorney, consultation with city attorney to seek advice of said attorney about pending legal matters. Show us going into executive session at nineteen fifteen. On item A.
The Godley City Council adjourned its executive session at 2012-2012 and reconvened an open session at 2016-2016. Item A, discussion of possible action regarding lawsuit Jennifer Thompson versus City of Godley, cause number three, two-three dash CB dash one-four-one-one. I make a motion or take no action on this item.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item six B, discussion and possible action on approval of the iWork Systems Applications and Service Agreement, a cloud-based software for managing assets, facilities, licenses, etc. Number one, infrastructure proposal. Number two, citizen engagement proposal.
I did do a demo today with it. Actually, they got me logged in to where I could do some of the things. This is just our water management to where we can go in and see different work orders that are put in. This right here is a view. Like on here, they're showing the red dots are valves and the green dots are different hydrants. So wherever we, you know, if we decide to go with this, we could actually pinpoint and see where everything's at for us.
What's the red and green denote? Trouble or good?
No, sorry. The red are water valves.
Oh, okay.
And the green are fire hydrants.
Okay.
Here I did a workup of a, of a work order. So I just entered in a work order, filled it, pothole, and any of our guys, once they get it, well, I would have access to be able to enter in stuff and somebody else could have access to it. My guys won't be able to enter in stuff, but they can go through and put completed or in progress and it'll show when they did all that. I can sit here and I can put it as an emergency, high, medium, low, or routine. Actually, there's one thing, big thing I liked about this is that, uh, let's see. Go back to here. Uh, we were talking about the citizen engagement. On this demo, it doesn't show a whole lot on it, but it could show where they have put in stuff. So like this person requested garbage pickup. So it's not strictly just public works. Like I said, on here, it's hard to see what they see, but, uh, these are just what's on here. It shows that they put in a complaint. So this is how we would see it if we were to get it. The resident would go in and put in their information, and this is how we would get it. And we would be able to come in here and put, like if we had a question on it, we could put in question, problem, complaint, you know, all that. Here it looks like there's a response that was done.
What's the citizen interface look like?
Uh, that's, uh, they can't put that on the, uh, on the demo, but what it is, is I've got a picture on my phone that they had emailed me. It was way later on this afternoon.
That's all right.
Okay. But I mean, it, it looks pretty good. It's on pretty much its own website. Um...
Does this tie into our existing website much? Is that how it works, or?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
It'll just be embedded.
On here, a good thing that we could do is we can run a report and go in here and we would have our own custom reports put in here. So let's just say I want to do a report on work order report. I can hit that and then it would do, this would all be customized. So I could do it from employee to work order number, you know, anything we want to put in there, I could run a report. So, um, that's a big deal that would be good to have as well because, but, let's say y'all have a question. I would be able to run a report and tell you what the guys have done or how long it's been on this project or anything like that.
How are you doing it now?
Right now, it's nothing. It's just we get a, we get a work order and we either fill out the work order or I just send in an email that shows that it's been completed. Another thing that's on here is material. We will be able to put every single piece of material that we have in here. So let's say we go and do a pothole repair. All we'd have to do is put that it took two sacks. Let's say there's eight sacks in our inventory and it uses two, it would automatically take those two away. So we know that there's only six sacks left and we need to order some more. Another great thing about it is we're able to put all of our equipment in here.
Will it do inventory?
Yes, sir. Not only would it be public works inventory, our equipment, it could be fire department, it could be police department, it could be every asset that the city has.
Will it do ancillations?
Yes, sir.
All right.
That's something we can have them do. Um... Right here. It shows what's on here. Like the red is work orders that are past scheduled date. So it would show us if we got something that we're supposed to have done and it went late, or it would show that, you know, stuff like that. This we would be able to pull up. This shows where all the different work orders are. So it would pinpoint each work order. So let's say there's one right there. Where we pull it up, I mean, they didn't enter in any information on here, but just because it's a demo, but we're, that's what it would be able to do. And right here would be a picture of what's right there in that area. So I think this would be the best way for the city to be able to track everything that is going on, all work orders. My, uh, my employees would be able to log in on their phones or tablets or whatever, computer, anything. They can go in and put in, complete it, or need more supplies to complete job or anything like that, instead of having to make a phone call or a text or anything like that. Uh, not only would we have access to it, but the staff up here would have access to it. So it works out to be best. Because right now, the only person I could put in a work order is the front, the city hall, and it's all by printout. So this would move us into modern times. It would make everything quicker and we would actually be able to track everything other than just a piece of paper.
Have you taken a look at the various reporting functions? Are they pretty robust?
I, I, you know, I liked it whenever I talked to the guys and did all that, but today whenever they gave me access to the demo and I got in on it, I fell in love with the thing, I might tell you. I think it, I think it's going to make my job a lot easier and a lot more trackable on everything that's going on.
Does that mean we can cut your pay by 10%?
I don't know about that.
It's a joke. Just joking.
Are there any other questions about this iWorks program?
Is it, are you comfortable using it? Is it pretty easy for you to use and your fellows can use it?
To me, it was super easy. They, uh, if we do go with it, pardon the first gear rate, is them sending a trainer down here to actually train us on it as well and help us get things entered in and all that. And once we do, if we do decide to go with it, we would have a trainer here within thirty to forty days. But in the process before that, they'll give us access online and they will send a, uh, a PowerPoint for us to be able to start putting stuff in and be able to use it before that thirty to forty-five days.
So this program will, kind of like I mentioned earlier, we have GIS data. They'll actually provide five hours in the package price to input that information or bring it over. It's in a file and it automatically uploads, but, um, they do quarterly GIS updates. It's all on page twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And then the appendix before that is just for the citizen engagement portion, because I wanted to break it up. So that way, if we just wanted to go with the iWorks, public works portion, we could, or we could also do the citizen engagement portion. I wanted y'all's opinion. Me personally, I like being a, so it's an app base for, you can do computer or app base. So if I'm out walking the streets and I find a leak, I can take a picture of it. It geocodes me right there. Um, if you can put in whatever information you want, they're customizable fields on the backend. Um, if I see, uh, where's the trees blocking the stop sign?
That is at...
First Ingram?
Fifth and, I guess, fifth Ingram.
Fifth Ingram. Fine. Wherever it's at, uh, they're, they could take a picture of it instead of us having to go out there and actually look at it and then devise a plan.
And they can also drop a pin at that location. So let's say somebody is halfway down a street, don't realize what street they're on. They can drop a pin at that location and type in whatever the issue is at that location.
Through the app?
Yes, through, through the app or through web based.
Kind of presupposes they're going to know how to do that. I mean, oh, you would, but, but either way, I mean...
From talking with the salesman, he said it's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, it, it shows them exactly what to do step by step.
So, and he, he didn't touch on this, but as they, let's say that it is a tree blocking a stop sign. Whenever they input that they went out there and looked at it, they devised a plan, it'll send the citizen an update if they so request that. So it's an engagement thing as well. That way, it's not two weeks down the road and they're like, well, they never did anything. Yeah, they did, and it sent you text messages or app updates, whatever it is. Um, and like he touched, it's not just for public works. That's what it's labeled as, because that's what it was approached about. But it'll do all of our asset tracking. Um, I've, if we have vehicles registration going out, it'll let me know.
Let you know ninety, sixty, and thirty days out. Same with oil changes we enter in. When the oil changes are due next, it'll do that as well. So, and I, and like I said, I mean, it does the red, yellow, and green. So ninety, sixty, and thirty days out from when those services are due.
But that's not dependent upon the citizen engagement portion, that way?
Correct. No, that's just, that's in the, it's regular.
So I'd, a show of hands for all of you out there. Who would want, who likes this app and who would use it? Walking the streets. There's one, two, three, four. Not even you, Mr. Peppinpost?
I would walk the street.
Well, you can drive.
But I probably have a problem with being somewhere.
I get you.
Like I said, they're customizable fields, so we can make it... Like I said, they're customizable fields, so we can make it extremely complicated, and they have to fill out fifty things, and it's not very. Citizen friendly, or we can put four or five things on there, so that way we can get the nuts and bolts, and if we need to contact them, well, contact them.
Yeah, that makes sense. And so the citizen engagement package is an extra thousand?
Yes.
On the citizens engagement package, the only concern I would have would be, uh. Someone using it.
Nefariously.
Nefarously, yes, I'm mad at my neighbor, so by gosh, I'm gonna. Put this down, or I'm at the city, so I'm gonna go. Put all, put five markers down about stuff that isn't there, so Kevin has to spend a day going and checking on stuff that isn't there.
Well, I guess we'll block some IP ranges.
Just so, something.
I think this section right here, we're able to go through today and customize this. And we can put it down to longitude, latitude and everything else. But we break it down to where it's like this, and it makes it easy for anybody to be able to see and understand everything that's on there. So all this is customizable as well, this is what we as the workers would see.
I'd like the work order to be, for the citizens input would be. City items only. Parks, roads, uh, whatever.
Do we have local access to the records, or are they all cloud-based, so? When the zombies come and we're gonna lose all our records, access to all our records?
I mean, we could probably do an on-prem and an off-prem version, but it's traditionally cloud-based. So from a managerial standpoint, this is something I would want. Just because, right now, he could say he went out there and did it, you know, unless I drive out there, I just have to trust him. But if it gets to the point where, well, they say they went and filled a pothole, but they really didn't do it. Then this work order just proves that they went out there and did it, it CYA for them, CYA for the city.
I believe it would pay for itself. That's, I'm sorry, I think it'd pay for itself, just in checking up on time, you know, going out and doing that, so it'd pay for itself.
I do too, not only that, but if I've got a worker that goes out and does a pothole that's, let's say. Two inches deep, and they've been out there four hours. There ain't no way it took four hours to fill that pothole. And 'cause all my reports that I could pull could show how long they were at that job site. So it would also kill just me and them wasting away time.
Is it self-reporting, that they're, they're, they go out there and they do it, or is there, is?
I would, I would assign different jobs to different personnel, and so they would have to go out and they would have to update the job. And so without them updating, right now, it's a, it's a trust game. But with this, like Michael was talking about, that we would be able to know it was done, it was done in a timely manner. We're not wasting taxpayers' dollars by sitting around and filling with our thumbs for two hours. And then doing an hour worth of work, and then just sitting there waiting for another hour.
What do you foresee in the, in the increase in production, the percentage? Eight, ten, twelve, or more, or less?
I don't think you're really gonna be able to gauge that until you start getting.
I think, I think we could probably get more jobs completed in a timely fashion. Because there is a big brother watching you now, you know, sort of saying. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but that's what, that's what it's come down to these days, I mean. You don't know how long somebody's at a job without actually having a tracking device or something like this.
I would say at least fifteen to twenty percent, 'cause most of your time, like. If they go fix a pothole on the north side of town, and then have to drive all the way back here. Well, they could've been fixing a pothole on their way back if they would've gotten that work order. So.
Ev- everything now, I've gotta come here to get the work orders, and I gotta take that to the guys, give that to them. And as we know, this week, the phone's been garbage here.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So the total price, if we went all the, everything they've listed here, would be eight thousand dollars for a year. And is this signers up for one year, three years, or whatever, I thought I saw something about that.
There is a three-year agreement in there, but we could do the, we could do the citizen engagement just for one year for a thousand dollars if we wanted to. That way we can see how much interaction is there before we commit to three years for that portion. Or we could do just the, I think it's what, three years on their, on their bid, or on their.
It says here on the billing, it says that they're gonna bill on an annual basis. Invoice customer on an annual basis. On, on number six, under billing.
That's a three-year contract though. Uh, except for the citizen engagement, they're willing to do us just a one year, to see if it's something that our citizens will use before we commit to that for three years.
Yeah, 'cause it does standard number seven after the initial three years done.
So what's this one-time setup GIS integration beta that has a two thousand doll, a two thousand dollar price tag with it, what is it?
That's where they go in and, and put in all of our information for the GIS, like for the water valves, for hydrants. For all of our water lines, our sewer lines, any kind of street sign that we have. They input all that in and it shows on that map that I was showing earlier.
But it's only for five hours, what's that?
Yes, sir, that, they'll, they'll put five of their hours towards entering in all that information.
Okay, so you have to get everything together.
Yes, sir.
Hand it to them.
Correct.
What happens if you give them twelve hours worth of work?
Well then, I guess I'll be doing the other remaining, you know, hours that it takes. Is that, or we pay them to enter in, but we can, we do, we will have access to be able, let's say we're driving along. And we see a new sign got put in, like a new neighborhood, and they put in a new stop sign, like on East Island. Where, uh, they put in that new neighborhood, where they started putting that new neighborhood, they're gonna be putting a stop sign right there. Let's say we already had this software, I would go out there and I would input and put in new stop sign, and it would show as well.
I see the bit's valid till tomorrow.
Yes, sir, that's for the discount, if you look, I got them popped down pretty decent.
Nice.
So that's only valid until tomorrow, so after that, we can go for twice.
So you're asking for the seventy-four hundredth floor, so it's for the grand total of the year one. Are you, and you're wanting to add the citizen engagement package also?
That's what I would suggest.
Which is another. Cause I have a twelve hundred and an eighteen hundred. So citizen engagement's twelve hundred annual, or they discount it for the first time? Right here. That's correct.
Yes.
Right here, citizen engagement, and this one would be the one-time setup, so would it be?
Okay, so it'd be eighteen hundred for the first year, and then after that, it would be twelve hundred per year. But you can see.
Or is it this plus this, because this is the, this is the citizen engagement package, this is the one-time setup.
Okay, this is GIS, correct, each one of these are different.
Okay, so we would have, just so I can make it clear further on there. Uh, we have seventy-four hundred on the prospect proposal for the public works package. Then we have twelve hundred on the citizen engagement package, and another eighteen hundred on the one-time setup GIS integration and data conversion. So we would have offered those, correct?
Yes, sir.
Except they're gonna discount. The data conversion, the one-time setup, they're giving us that. So it goes from twelve-nine to seventy-four hundred, if I'm reading that correct.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yes, I said seventy.
We're looking at a grand total for all three at two thousand four hundred dollars, which is still two thousand dollars cheaper. Than if we were to do just a one-time regular one before I got it discounted.
And this being an ongoing service, their code can, is this something that will be put into the new budget for, since it's a three-year plan?
Yes, it's built into it.
It's already built into it?
Yes, in case it's approved. So right now, we're utilizing it for public works, I-Works does all of our departments. We can look at expanding it if we like it, if we don't like it, we'll get rid of it after three years. Um, and get rid of, citizen engagement isn't used, get rid of it after one year. It kind of fixes our asset management problem. Fixes our issues where we're not getting things serviced.
Are we having a problem in that area, not getting things serviced?
Well, like, we have registrations that are expiring this month.
Trucks and stuff, okay. Not citizen service, but.
Well, yeah.
Right, okay.
To me, this is an asset thing, it also does do the citizen engagement. But it helps us track our, where our money's going. And we don't run into the issue of, well, now we don't know where our water valves are, so it'll all be GIS located. And they can put how big they are.
Not only that, but we can go in, and whether it's us or the fire department, or whoever goes out and does hydrant testing. We put in there what the pressure was, it's the date that we tested it, and so both departments will be able to see it as well.
Do we have statutory requirements for that from the state, or is that just us? Just curious, we could use this for, say, oh, the state said, oh, did you go out and test your fire hydrants, yeah, we sure did, here's the report, boom.
There is a requirement that we do test. I don't, I don't know what that requirement is, I don't know how often, but it's good to know every year what your pressures are, because. Normally, the way a fire hydrant is painted is in different groups, different colors for different pressures. So, that's how the fire department, the guy driving, he see a hydrant, let's say he's going to the school. For, say, the school on fire. We wanna know that we wanna pick a good hydrant to run off of, prepared to us hooking up and not having enough pressure. To be able to handle and build and all that, so this would be able to help with that as well.
Hopefully, you're already gonna know that, though, right?
Well, honestly, if there's nothing on paper, we don't know exactly which hydrants are what if they're not painted properly.
NFPA two-nine-one. They have to be tested every five years.
Oh, okay.
And all of ours is the same color, right, so I mean, they're all of ours.
All of ours are the same color, I can't tell you what their pressures are on, I haven't tested it.
So would that be the responsibility, would that be the responsibility of public works or the fire department to do that testing?
Honestly, they could both do it together and kill them a lot quicker. I mean, honestly, I wouldn't put that on one or the other, I mean, that's up to council. Or if departments wanna work together, which I don't see why they could work together on getting one done and knocked out quicker.
Do we know a rough estimate of how many hydrants we have in our city? I mean, I know that's.
I can't.
Make a motion to approve item six B in its entirety. Both infrastructure and citizen engagement.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve item six B in its entirety, including one and two. Any further discussion?
I do have another question, I don't know if I've dismissed that, sorry. On the first year, with those three figures coming up to ten-four, what is the second and the third year? Are they the exact same cost for each year after that?
I know it's five thousand for the, uh.
For the public works package?
Yeah, the public works package, I know is five thousand for that, for years two and three each.
And twelve hundred for the.
And twelve hundred for the citizen engagement.
That's just a year one.
Yeah, we don't have the year one for the GIS, but the GIS, if it's been done once, there's no need to keep paying for it.
It says one-time setup.
Sir?
It says one-time setup, so you're gonna get that once, and it'll be two thousand dollars, you won't pay for that second, third year.
Correct. We would just be paying, what, sixty-two hundred?
Eight hundred dollars, eight, yeah, you get that two hundred dollars?
Sixty-two hundred for years two and three.
Okay, so ten thousand four hundred first year, sixty-two hundred for year two and three.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
If, if I could, what is, what is the total value of the contract over the three years, is it less than fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm hearing, just wanna make sure, um, so.
At the most, it's twenty-four.
There's a motion.
Um, I'm gonna add that.
So the only thing I would add to the motion, I've, I've, I've just looked at the contract, is to add subject to annual appropriations. So anytime you're doing a contract over one-year period, you haven't budgeted for the next year yet. Okay, so, whenever we have contracts over multiple years, what we recommend is you make them subject to annual appropriation. So if the, in the next fiscal year, y'all decide not to appropriate funds for this contract, you're not bound to be in the contract. And I get that that's, that's a problem for these service as a, software as a service contracts. Cause they like to kind of do like a three-year bundle, but I think that it needs to be subject to annual appropriations. So that'd be my recommendation.
So in the contract itself, before it's signed, it needs to come to you and have that put in there, is that correct?
Yeah, we can, we can amend it, you can do it here, I mean, it's, it's a, the expenditure isn't that great. As far as it's not, you know, exceeding fifty thousand dollar threshold. Um, and it's high technology, so this is a service that you can acquire without bids. But, again, anytime you're going beyond the next fiscal year, you haven't budgeted yet, so we can't be bound by that. So that's, that's the limitation. Um, I didn't look at the contract, I, I hadn't been provided the contract before the council meeting. We can, we can take a look, I don't wanna bust the, uh, the, the date for getting the discount. But I do wanna make sure that we're doing it legally correct.
Did you say that's tomorrow?
Yeah, they had lots more to sign, I probably.
Is there a time, is there by the end of the day, or?
By the end of the day, or by the end of the day.
I'll send it to you tonight.
Okay, send it to me tonight. Yeah, we'll look through it, we'll have some changes. Um, sometimes what they'll do is they'll have a link, so, so these contracts right here look like they're only a couple pages. But they'll have a linked contract, and you go click on that link and it'll be like a hundred pages.
Do you have that?
I've got the contract on digital, so does Michael, so we can get it emailed to you.
Okay, yeah, just email it to me and I'm, we'll make some changes.
You have it in your email.
Thank you, sir.
There you go.
Okay, so some other things we'll do, we'll strike through the indemnity clause, if we, we can indemnify, that constitutes a unconstitutional debt. So there's some limitations there that, that, I mean, it's typical for software contracts, but we'll strike through the language before it goes out to them, before you all execute.
Yeah, I'm coming up with a total over the three years, twenty-two eight, so it's under.
Yeah, so we're under, we're well under the threshold, but, but still, still, if, if next year y'all decide, we're not gonna budget for this.
So, if y'all look at page twenty-seven and twenty-eight. That gives y'all the breakdown for both of them together. Probably should've mentioned that earlier.
Uh, so, I forget, parliamentary procedure, do I need to make a motion to amend my motion? Make a motion to amend my motion?
How do you wanna amend your motion?
Well, nobody has to second it?
You're just amending your motion, we'll vote on that, and then we'll vote on the amended motion.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna amend my motion to approve six B in its entirety, items one and two, subject to annual appropriations.
I have a motion to amend the motion on the floor for six B one and two, to include subject to annual appropriations, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second for the amendment.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion to amend passes. Now I have a motion on the floor for six B one and two, subject to annual appropriations.
Second it?
I'll make, I'm making that motion, so.
Oh.
Motion and a second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item 6C, discussion and possible action on, of the fiscal year 2223 audit report presented by Merritt, McLean, and Hamby.
Mayor Proton, I have a question. Is there any way that we could move 6G up so that these people that are here for that can... Or if not, then we'll proceed in the order we have.
We can move it up after this one, yes. I'm gonna have to send him some new login information, so we'll move to item 6G. Discussion and possible action on removal of directors and appointment of new directors to the Godley 4B Economic Development Committee. So we've been going over this for quite some time. Everybody was supposed to pick two people that they would like on the committee. Has everyone done that?
I did not.
Yes, I have.
I have.
You have or haven't?
I have.
You have two.
I do.
Two.
I guess need to come up with one.
I hadn't got to ask him, but the gentleman that runs the donut shop, he had mentioned to me one time he'd be involved in, but I hadn't got back to him and asked him.
For, so Scott, who are yours?
Melissa Wojczen and Michael Shinatko. Wojczen, W-O-Y-C-A-T-E-S-I-N. Shinatko is S-C-I-N-A-T-I-C-O.
And both of mine are here tonight. Tammy, and please tell me if I say these wrong. Tammy Cotino, and it's C-O-T-T-I-N-O. And then Cara Lee Wilson.
I am doing Julie Eastman and Tara Westbrook. You said Michael McLeod was interested?
He's, I've talked to him, been a bit, and he was, seemed like he was interested, but I hadn't been able to get back with him.
So Scott, will you, is there a reason why you chose those people, or actually, let's go to the people that are here? Misty, your people.
Yes, um, okay. So I was fortunate enough to come across these ladies, had an interview with both of them. They did submit their, some of their resume to me. Um, both of them are here tonight. I don't know if you brought a presentation you would like or a portfolio you'd like to share, anything. I give them that opportunity if they choose to. They do have an extensive background in project management, major retail, strategic planning. These are things that I was very specific on what I was looking for, for this board, because of, I wanted people that would have vision for five years down the road of where our city's going. And I do believe that both these ladies, after speaking to them, they have that vision, and they have that capability to see beyond because they deal with large projects professionally. So I do believe that they're gonna be an asset to this board. What, maybe the women y'all like to speak?
Tammy Cotino.
We'll have, I'm sorry, we'll have you come up to the, here, turn the, turn the speaker on. Just because people watching, they'd probably like to hear you.
Um, Tammy Cotino.
Turn it on. This was that big, but, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Sorry. I, I did not claim to be very technical. Um, Tammy Cotino, I did bring something if y'all want to see it. I, it was very, very short notice, and I have been working my regular job, but it's just kind of qualification on what I've done. And I did, um, add pictures.
Thank you. Yes, I will add that these ladies accommodated me on a last-minute notice and made it, their cells available to come up and talk to us. So I do appreciate that.
So mainly, what I do is, I work for the TJX companies. We own TJ Maxx Marshall's Home Goods, Home Sense Sierra. I am manager of development in charge of property development, construction, building ground ups, remodels, rehabs, whatever. I cover Washington, Oregon, California, Arizona, Nevada, Utah, Texas, Arkansas, Louisiana, and Mississippi as my territories for construction. I have a background in, like, contracts. We go out to bid. I gotta make sure it's fair, equal. Everybody has the same information. I review the bids, make sure that they're the most value, value engineer. So I just wanted to offer my services if the city could use it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. More proud to have you. Thank you. So those are my two choices.
So Dean, how do we need to go about remotioning for removal and approval in the same motion?
I think we're, the thought is to remove everyone all at once, right? Maybe it'd be best to do two separate motions. One for the removal, and then... And then come back and do a separate one. Unless you want to combine them. I mean, I just think it's clean for the record.
Make a motion to remove all current 4B directors.
I have a motion to remove all current 4B directors. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to approve, and I don't have all of their names, the list of their names, but, well, yes, I do. To approve Melissa Wojczen, Michael Shinatko, Julie Eastman, Tara Westbrook, Michael McLeod, Cara Lee Wilson, Tammy Cotino as 4B directors.
That's seven.
Yes, that's seven.
That's eight. No, that's seven, sorry.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I got a motion and a second as presented. Any further discussion? No further discussion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, ladies.
I'm gonna see if I can get him on the Zoom call now. He's logging in right now.
Hey, sir.
Hey, I'm putting you up on the screen real quick.
You're muted, I think.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. All right. Are, are we ready for, for the report, or?
We are ready.
Okay. All right, well, uh, I'm Michael Hamby with Merritt McLean and Hamby, and, uh, the audit is for last, last year. But, um, but we're, we're, um, we were able to get what we needed to be able to finish the audit, so it's, it is complete. We have, uh, we have some down reports and a letter that goes with that, uh, that Stacy will mail, uh, tomorrow. We, we usually bring it to the meeting when we come. But once, once the, uh, once the, once it's approved or, or accepted by the city council, then we, um, um, hand those out. So, um, in any case, that stapled letter that's in the back of the report has the audit adjustments. So if those are not yet recorded yet, they can be at that point. But the, the report itself, uh, and you have, y'all have a PDF of the report, is that?
Uh, we have, uh, paper copies.
Paper copies, okay, you printed them out. Okay, great. So, um, so I'm gonna look at the independent auditors' report, which is on page one, and then a couple of the numbers in the financial statements themselves. And then, and then I'll be done unless there are questions on the report. So, um, so the on pink one, the independent auditors' report is the part of the report that, um, that we own. Uh, it's on our letterhead, and, um, the second paragraph is the opinion paragraph where we state our opinion that the financial statements, um, are fairly stated, or present fairly the financial position of the, of the city. And that opinion paragraph is a clean, a clean audit opinion or unmodified audit opinion, which is, um, you know, what you want from your auditor, so that's good. And that is, um, as it said, the part that we put on the front of your report. Um, and then if you look, if you can flip back to page 10, depending on the form that you have, if it's stapled, if you've got it stapled, then this is a facing page, so on the left-hand side, if it's stapled, the first page says statement of net position, and it has assets and deferred outflows of resources. And the next page says liabilities, deferred inflows, and net position. In the bound copy, those are facing pages with a binding in the middle, but...
Page 45 and 46.
So that, um, is your statement of net position, and what we look at on that page is, um, the predominant, the main thing we look at is, we look at total unrestricted current assets, and we compare that with your current liabilities. And what we want to see is a three-to-one ratio, or better. I mean, if we can get better, that's great. But, um, so, uh, for the city at September 3022, that current asset number, uh, which is the total column there, is $3,723,445. The current liabilities on the other page, um, in that first section, is $536,766. So that ratio is just, just under seven to one, 6.9 to one. So that's great. And, um, you know, from our standpoint, that's, that's what we want to see. We want to see that you have enough cash and things that turn into cash, like receivables and, and investments, that you can handle paying whatever your current liabilities are, the liabilities you've already incurred and that are due within the year. So if you have notes payable, for example, it's just a portion that's due within the year. And then the other thing that we look at is that very first line on the assets, which is cash and cash equivalents. Um, at that point, you had $3,228. And if you flip over to the next page, which is your statement of activities, that the very first column is your expenses. And if you look down at the, at the bottom of that column, uh, the total expenses was $3,763,718. So you've got cash of 3.2 million and annual expenses of 3.1, a little under 3.8. So that's roughly 10 months' worth of operations that you have in cash, which is excellent. And if, if we, from a financial standpoint, an audit standpoint, if we can see that you're, that you have six months' work, we're pretty happy, and you, at that point, had, uh... And you, at that point, had about ten months, so that's great. And then the other thing that we look at is down in the net position, net position section, the first line is net investment in capital assets and you have it, and we just wanna see a positive number there. Because that, what that represents is your long-term assets net of your debt. And we look at that specifically because oftentimes, long-term assets are purchased with debt, bonds or other debt. And so we just wanna see as those assets are depreciating and as you're paying down the debt, that the asset, the net value of the asset and the net, what's left on the debt is, is a positive. If your assets are worth more than the debt and you are to the good by two point three million, which is great. Then the next line there is restricted assets and just for a refresher on what that is, you've got in your business type activities, your utility stuff, you have three point three million and that was restricted for construction. And then in the governmental activities, you have three point, three million one hundred eighty thousand. And that, I believe, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand of that was road maintenance, restricted for road maintenance and just about two point nine million was for economic development. So that's, that's what those restrictions were for. And then, other thing I wanted to point out is on page twelve. And page twelve is your balance sheet for your governmental funds and that first column of that sheet is the general fund. And, and at the, the second to bottom number is your fund balance, total fund balance. You've got a total fund balance at September thirtieth of last year of three million two thirty-two three seventy. And so, and the reason we, I look at that number is because you spend, you spend a lot of time typically in the summer, I guess, budgeting for your general fund. You know, you're, you're determining your tax rates based on what you're budgeting and what you feel like you need for revenues to cover the expenditures that you need to make for your various general fund items. And then throughout the year, you amend your budget based on how things are actually turning out. And so, so that three point two million, you, in your budget, you had actually budgeted to end up at two point six million. So you're, you were a little bit more than six hundred thousand ahead of budget last year, which is really, which is great. And if you, if you wanted to look at that budget to actual comparison, it's back on page forty, which is way towards the back of the report. I think there's, I think there's a total of forty-five pages, numbered pages and forty is almost at the back, so. And if you look, if you look on there, you're, on the revenue side of things, the biggest item that was over budget was your sales tax. So sales tax came in significantly over budget and, which is, which is great. And you also had some grant revenue that you hadn't budgeted for of a hundred and seventy-one thousand. And then on your expenditures, all of your expenditures in every department was under budget, which is, which is great. It means that you're mending your budget and staying within it and, you know, underspending is good and we, we, we do, we do several cities and I'll just say that not, by statute, you're supposed to be over budget, you know, you're supposed to be under budget like this, but we don't always see that. So that's, that's a testament, that's a testament to, you know, your, the administrative side of, of the house, getting things to you as a council and then you acting on that, those things and amending budgets and only approving what's within budget, that sort of thing to be able to stay in there. So that's where, that's where the, that's where the budget came out and where you ended up, so. And then I think, and I think you, I think you had, you had. Your, your net income for the year was. Six, it was a little over a million dollars and you were, you were budgeting, originally you budgeted to use some fund balance, use three hundred and seventy-five thousand of your fund balance. And then with your amended budget, you were looking at just a little better than break even and you ended up with a million positive, so. You know, really, really good year from that standpoint. That million, more than half of that was on the revenue side, which is, which is great, so. So, you know, overall, from an audit perspective, an auditor's perspective, it's a really good report. You know, you're, 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 you're under budget on your expenditures, your cash is in good shape, your current assets are in good shape and you're managing your debt, so, you know, overall, you know, good report. So that, that's all I was gonna cover in the report unless, unless there was something that you wanted me to, I mean, there's obviously a lot of pages in there, so.
So I think there's some, can you clarify from your standpoint, the difference between this and a like forensic audit? We're looking at doing a forensic audit. A lot of people say, well, you have an audit every year. Can you explain the difference?
Yeah, a forensic, well, a financial statement audit, what we do is we take your numbers and we sample, we do a sampling of what makes up those numbers. So for example, for cash, we look at your bank reconciliations to see that you did them and that there's nothing very strange on the bank recs. Your receivables, we look at money that you have billed, like for example, receivables for your utilities. We'll look at your billing system records and see that, what your billing system says the receivable should be and then compare that with, you know, what's on the books and see what, what the reconciling items might be. And then we'll also do a, a test of, you know, some utility bills to see that they're being calculated right, maybe they're using, that you're using the correct rates. We can't, we can't, we don't check to see that the meter readings were done correctly, but we, but we do look to see that the last meter reading and the current meter reading, the difference is what's being billed. And then, and then as far as expenditures go, well, and then on the revenue, we, we also look at the central appraisal district to, to get tax revenues and we look at, so we're, we're trying to look at outside third-party support for some of the numbers. And then we do a sampling of payroll to see that people are being paid what the file says they should be paid and then we calculate net pay versus gross pay. We usually will do a sample of just a pay period. And then we'll look at invoices for pretty much all of your capital expenditures and we'll look at all of your debt payments. And then we look at a sample, twenty-five, sometimes, sometimes a few more, but usually around twenty-five items that are either haphazardly or randomly selected just to see that checks or, or payments are being made that have good support for them. So they, the vendor is the same as on the invoice and the amount's the same and it's paid in a relatively timely manner and that kind of thing. So that's, that's what we do for financial statements. You basically say, here's our financial statements and we check within materiality, we check to see that it looks like it's fairly presented. If, in a forensic audit or in an audit where you're trying to determine, well, for example, if you, if you suspected fraud in a, in a particular area and you felt like the. I'm trying to, if you, if you, if you felt like there was a particular area that was susceptible to fraud or you suspected it or something, then you might look at, in that area, you might look at every expenditure and trace where it came from, where it went and who authorized it, whether it was signed, you know, who signed it. And you might, you know, if you, if you have inside information that there's something inappropriate going on, you might have the ability to, with that information, look for that particular thing and then if you can find it, then back down, find out how much, how much of that might have gone on. And we have done that type of work on occasion. It's usually a, you know, it's an agreed upon procedures type of engagement, but there are firms that, there are firms and that do, that, that's what they do all, all the time. And, and so they, they, they dig into a lot, they're, they're trying to tie down every number, every dollar basically, instead of looking at an overall financial picture and trying to determine if there are any material misstatements that are identified. And, and when we're doing a financial statement audit, if somebody tells us, hey, take a close look at something, then we will. We'll take a closer look at that area, but absent anything like that, then we're, we're looking at, we're looking at the numbers and we're taking the support that we're supplied and we're matching it up and making sure that it's recorded correctly and in the right place and it's presented correctly for the report and that sort of thing. And we get a representation letter from, where we get the information saying, everything we gave you was right, we didn't withhold anything and we didn't distort anything.
So the CAFR is basically like a small sampling of different accounts, haphazardly or specific things, but an overall health of the city financially, rather than looking in depth?
We don't, we don't look at, right, we don't dig into every transaction, you know, you can kinda think of it sort of like an IRS audit. When the IRS comes in and they're looking at you personally, your, your tax return, they're looking at every single item and they're trying to, trying to figure out if there's a dollar out of place anywhere. And that's not what we're doing. What we're trying to do is say, if you tell us, you know, this financial statement that we just looked at as, you know, your balance sheet. Your balance sheet shows that you've got, you know, three and a half million dollars worth of assets and you show us bank statements that, that support three million of it and then we look at a sale, at sales tax receivable number of almost four hundred thousand and we see that that came in, in October, then we can say, alright, well, we've, we've got cash of three, we've got a receivable of point four and you're telling us it's three point seven total, you know, we've, we've looked at, we've nailed down about ninety percent of it just by looking at those two things, so we're comfortable that you're not distorting things to the point where if somebody looks at this, they're gonna get a wrong picture of how the city's looks. And that, that's what a financial statement audit is. And I, to give a fair, a fair presentation within materiality limits of how the city looks.
Alright, I appreciate that. I just asked you that question on the spot because there's, the council's new, so I want them to understand what they're looking at.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Y'all have any questions?
So, if I understood you, what you just said basically is, we look at what you self-report to us and make sure that what you've self-reported, just to the, to some degree, not always just self-reported or not one hundred percent, some of the things you checked, but whatever you self-reported to us is good to go.
Yeah, you, you, you record it to us and then we look at larger items, larger items and items that are, that we deem to be higher risk. You know, for example, fixed assets typically are, they're large amounts, but they're typically fairly low risk because they're not super movable, you know, a building, for example, it might be, or your water treatment plant might be huge as far as your assets, amount of asset, but it's not like you can do much with it other than it just sits there. But we might look more closely at cash, for example, 'cause that can move, or a truck, you know, because it's movable and, and could be that you, when you purchase a truck, you know, so when we look at fixed assets, for example, we look to see that it was a city vehicle.
And we tell you which fixed assets to look at, of course.
Well, yeah, you give us a list and then we look at, we look at the, the listing of new stuff, 'cause it, you know, typically it'll stay around for a while, but, and, and make sure that, and then when we do our sampling, we'll look at larger items in some of the sampling, so that we're, you know, we're making sure that if you're telling us that you spent several hundred thousand dollars on new fixed assets, that you actually have invoices that back that up and, and, and so we're looking at, in, in, in the case of this audit, your general fund, you didn't really have, your governmental fund, you really didn't spend very much, but you had, excuse me, you had one point eight million in construction for, on the utility side, so we looked at, you know, those invoices from the engineers or contract, whoever the general contractor was, to see that, that, that number looks good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions now it's your turn to ask?
Is there a list or things that we, that you tell the city they'll be working on, things they need to do better, do a new system, anything of that, any kind of criticism, any type of suggestions in this?
Well. When we, we did the audit in December and when we did follow-up stuff, some of our follow-up stuff in January and February. Some of that follow-up was a little difficult because there were, there either were different people or there weren't people or something. I don't know what all happened exactly, but I know that the people, the main people that we dealt with in getting the information in December weren't available for some of the later follow-up. We, we got ninety, ninety-five percent of what we needed probably, but there were some follow-up questions and we had some difficulty getting some of that information, so I would assume that some of the processes need to be reworked because there are new people doing them, there's new people checking them and depending on the, you know, depending on who those people are and what their background is and all of that. you know, depending on who those people are and what their background is and all of that, I I do think that you had a, a third-party accounting person, somebody from outside the city who was helping with some of the entries to close out the books at the end of the year. I think that, having someone like that, a CPA or s- or somebody that's very familiar with governmental accounting, looking at things at the end of the year, looking at reconciliations or maybe even doing some of the reconciliations and closing entries and accruals and things like that is is a very good thing to do unless you have a large and experienced accounting department, which you may end up with, depending on how how things go. But we have found that in, you know, a lot of cases, that's a very helpful control because it's somebody from outside who's very well-versed in accounting specifically and bookkeeping, who's looking at the books and doing a a check on a lot of the numbers before we get, before we get them. So that there's fewer adjustments that we have to do, for example. And some of the, some of the things that may have, you know, just errors or or omissions of some kind, accruals that weren't done, that kind of thing are are done. And also the the reconciliation process, having that, being outside person helps, it just helps to have a s- a another set of eyes looking, looking at it. So I would, I I guess, I would suggest that whenever you, I I, well, I would suggest that the council be involved in the process of what the policies and procedures are for all the different various things that are done in the city. And then when it comes to reconciliations, closing the books, accruals, things like that, if you don't have a large department for the accounting, that you continue to find somebody from outside, not the auditors, but somebody else to just check that stuff over. They can do some of it or at least check, check it and make sure that it's being done properly. That gives us a lot of comfort and it should give, I would think, you a lot of comfort that the person doing it's looking at it, somebody from outside is looking at it and then we look at it overall again. So and then, of course, monthly, you're gonna be looking at budget actual and and some of the information yourself also. I I think that, I think that having the auditor, having like this conversation and and presentation is something that is good to have, so that you can ask questions. There were a couple of years in there that where we didn't present the report and it's okay, we don't have to, but it's helpful, I think, for you to be able to ask me. And and so I think that's a a a helpful thing. And then and then I think also having, when when it comes to writing checks, for example, having somebody on the council who's, or or several people, maybe, you know, the officers or wh- whoever you decide, but some people on the council being able to sign checks, maybe have dual signatures on the checks where somebody from the council is looking at things when they, before they go out and and signing, so that you know, you know, what's being spent and who's getting the money and that it's fine. And it it it's, you know, the c- the council's always gonna be responsible. So the more you can look at things and make sure that you're comfortable with it before it goes out the door, the I would think the more comfortable you'd be.
Good. Anything else? When do I need to start getting numbers to you for this next audit?
As soon as you, as soon after September thirtieth, as you, as the bank accounts are reconciled and the accruals are made. If there's payroll accruals and payables and receivables and stuff like that, once those are all recorded, then we're ready. And so, um, we 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 have typically, you know, in the past, we have typically waited until we hear from you when things are gonna, or not from you, but for from the mayor or from Mr. Wallace or whoever it was that was contacting us, saying, okay, it's gonna be ready in six weeks. And then we put it on the calendar. But we we'd be happy to, if you wanna tell us a time that you want us to start, you'll be ready and you want us to start doing it, then we will look at the calendar and get it in in schedule as close to that as we can.
Okay, I'll call you tomorrow and explain some issues that we're going through. No way it's gonna wrap a conversation on a council meeting?
Yeah, no, no problem. You have my cell number. That's probably the best way to reach me.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
You have a great night.
Bye. Have a good night.
So are y'all thoroughly confused?
Yeah.
What are we gonna do? We're gonna motion to approve this audit or is that what you need at this point?
So the audit has to be approved before fiscal year end. So September thirtieth, so.
Well, I read about forty pages and then started to glaze over over the rest of it. Do you want me to read the whole thing? Is that what you're telling me?
I mean, whenever they sent the draft over, I read the whole thing on a Friday afternoon. Wasn't the best read.
Alright, making motions, uh, what, you wanna postpone it? Till December thirty-first?
No, it has to be done before the fiscal year.
Oh, the fiscal year, okay. When's our fiscal year?
September thirtieth.
September thirtieth.
So it has to be approved at the next meeting if we don't do it now.
We can't do a no action, right, Dean? We gotta do a postpone and then say when we're gonna approve it or whatever, right?
And just remember, if we postpone it for too long, I have to send this back to them and they have to send their signed copy back, so.
Alright, well, I'll just make a motion to postpone six C until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be, when is that? September fifth?
Yes, that's the first meeting in September.
Okay.
I got a motion to postpone six C till September fifth. Do I have a second?
A second?
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So what exactly are you wanting? What what do you need from me so that way it can be approved or so I can get back to?
I'm just gonna read the whole thing through, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
No further discussion, Scott?
No. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously to postpone till September fifth. I need y'all to read that so that way I can get it to them.
This doesn't really track our physical assets, does it?
No, somewhat. Item six D, discussion and possible action on the final plat of Cooper's estate lots one and two, block one, Johnson County, Texas. This plat is dividing a ten-acre tract into two tracts, each four point nine three three acres and dictating a right-of-way for county road nine fifteen.
So we're going into five, basically five acre tracts, which is not bad, like that. Do we know what else they're gonna do with that? It doesn't matter at this point, I suppose.
So if I remember correctly, this is the plat that they're looking to divide between their kids.
Okay. Make a motion to approve item six D in its entirety.
I have a motion to approve item six.
One comment, dedicating, not dictating. Just just change the word dictating to dedicating. In the, in the actual item, yeah.
I got a motion to approve item six D with the correction of dedicating instead of dictating.
On the agenda?
Dedicate.
Yes. I was wondering what dictating a right-of-way was, but put it on there.
I see what you mean. There's a big difference in the meaning there.
Do I have a second? All seconded. Any further discussion?
Trying to figure out what the right-of-way stuff was.
It's probably gonna be that run right up the middle, isn't it?
No, it's across the front, along the high, along, along the farm, the county road. I just don't know what it, I just didn't matter, I don't know what it did, I just don't know what it did.
So I believe it's because part of their property goes into the roadway. A lot of county roads actually go to the center line. There's goes slightly into the road. Johnson County Public Works was fine with this.
If you look at it, okay, the road at one point is
Kinda juts off.
Is up and then it's down from the property line and they're making a straight line across there. So that road must make a little jog right there, okay. I know what I'm, okay, never mind. I just never saw that before.
Oh, you're good. I'd rather you ask than just vote randomly. Any other discussion? No further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item six E, discussion and possible action on the replat of Eel Creek addition, phase one, a subdivision located in the ETJ of the city of Godling.
So we've got four, one point four, basically one point seven.
So this has gone back and forth between Glenn saying it's good, Johnson County saying it's bad, going back to the developer, going back to Glenn, going back to Johnson County. Unfortunately, she's on vacation this week. So I couldn't get a final ruling from her, but according to Glenn, everything that she had concerns about was fixed on the developer's revision.
What is the argument from the county? I can't see anything on this. Is that a pipeline easement that's running through there or what?
There is a pipeline over that area.
The best I can make out is easement note number nine and that's it. I didn't bring my old man magnifying glass.
Yes, it it's a pipeline. But I mean, if you wanna read it, you can.
Oh, no, I thought, I thought there's a question about what Johnson County.
Yeah, there was. Johnson County's argument.
So this is, this is the email from Mayor Ford Manor, Johnson County Public Works. So both of us refer to the medical.
Eight, on the lots of flooded zone A, however, note eight deals with the water provider being Johnson County SUD phase one and landmarkers phase two. So apparently that's been corrected on what you have.
I still, I have on eight, water to be supplied by Johnson County Special Utility District. That's what's supposed to be there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Note eight deals with the water provider being Johnson County SUD phase one and landmarkers phase two. It does not list the base flood elevation of that area, which is more likely that they should be, what they should be referencing. So base flood elevation. I think that was the last comment. But then I see another email here that says it's good.
Is there a shot clock? When is it up on this one? Is it something that we have to approve now or could we wait till she's back in town so that we can have her here discuss it?
So the replat was dated eight, nine, and twenty-three, so. Friday.
Wednesday.
Guess I just stuck it on there 'cause I don't wanna miss any more shot clock items.
When's our next meeting?
The next regular meeting is
So we have for the eighth, September eighth?
So whenever they do revisions, that restarts the shot clock, correct? Because it wasn't a complete.
Yeah, I'm I'm not seeing an indication here, though, that there's anything left to be resolved on it, though. Is that, is that what y'all are looking for?
I think they're wanting to wait to hear from Johnson County.
Is Jennifer good with it then, as far as you know?
I mean, that's what I'm seeing from the, if I'm reading Glenn's.
Is that Glenn saying she's good with it or Jennifer saying she's good with it?
His letter is from August eleventh. Emails I have are from August eleventh.
His letter of recommendation does say this replat addresses questions raised by Johnson County from their review. His letter of recommendation does say this replat addresses questions raised by Johnson County from their review. I mean, if it doesn't address them, Jennifer comes back next week and says, well, that didn't work, well, we fire Glenn.
So she, she originally raised the issue on August second, so it looks like the letter comes. And then I see another email here from the eleventh. This is from Black Rock Homes, or, excuse me, Dover Rock. Saying it's good to go, so.
Make motion to approve the replat of Eagle Creek Edition Phase One.
I have a motion for item six E as presented.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item six F, discussion and possible action on the replat of Eagle Creek Edition Phase Two subdivision located in the ETJ of the city of Godling.
Again, as far as we know, everything's been addressed?
Yes. I'll double check real quick.
Is there a stamp or anything they put on these that tell us the county has looked at it?
That's my concern, only just stating due to when they were both here, the county did express that they are not getting told everything, and I just wanna make sure there is a clear communication with all of this in our ETJ, and that the county is involved, because I just think that that's.
So the reason why we're not voting on giving them back is because they are involved now, as soon as I get something, I send it to our engineer and Jennifer. That was one of their main issues, whenever I talked to them, the county judge, and a few others.
Well, I think that was one of their major concerns when they showed up here, too, is that that was not being communicated with them on these projects, and I just wanna make sure that that's not happening still.
I'd like to see something that says the county has looked at it.
I mean, I can work with them and see what they can do, I mean, they're not gonna stamp anything prior to us approving it, but I can get an email of their recommendation, kinda like Glenn gives us.
Something like this would be fine. Even if it's just an email she sends that we can read it.
I mean, I can start giving you all my emails.
I get enough emails.
Whenever Jennifer emails me back saying we have no comments, I can print that out and attach it to it.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great. Just something on it. Make a motion, we postpone this to the next meeting, however we should word that. And make sure the county has looked at it.
Second.
So a motion to postpone till September fifth. I got a motion and a second to postpone till September fifth. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious, you approved the Phase One, but you're not wanting to approve Phase Two. So could someone explain to me what the difference is?
Well, Phase One was already done a lo- a while back.
Uh-huh.
And we don't know if it was looked at by the city or not by the county, that was not ever brought up to our attention. It has been brought up to our attention, the county's not getting them properly, and I'd like to see something from the county, or at least a phone call saying, yes, we're okay with it.
No, I agree with you, I just agree we should've done that straight across the board for Phase One and Two, but why approve one half and not the other? I guess that's what I'm trying to.
This was on Phase Two, we have something saying it's done.
Yes, sir.
On Phase Two, we have a email that says it's done.
Yeah, so on both of these, we have the, the letter from Glenn.
Yes.
And that, and this is what it says, for the record, and I think there's a comment about Glenn, you know, if we're depending on this, we, we don't have a direct email on this one from the county saying, we've reviewed this, but this is what Glenn's letter to us, to the city says. This development, or, excuse me. This is replat of the second phase, so now Phase Two, of the development, the final plat addresses questions raised by Johnson County from their review. So it's a question of, do you, is that sufficient?
I didn't see that.
Which says the same thing on Phase One, letter.
Yes, yes, so for both phases, you have this letter from your engineer saying that Johnson County's looked at it.
So we either trust our engineer or we don't.
Well.
But that's kinda where I was going.
That's what I'm looking, I did not see, the first, a minute ago, we had a, it was read out to us, they had done it, I did not see this. I'll take back my.
Well, it's already been seconded, so.
Okay.
We'll vote on it.
Just vote.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott.
Nay.
Misty.
And this, the motion is to approve it?
No, not to approve.
No, to postpone, so nay would mean you don't wanna postpone.
No.
No.
I don't wanna postpone.
No. Motion fails. I make a motion to approve the replat of Eagle Creek Edition Phase Two as presented.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously, and I'll make sure I include those final no comment emails if anything further. Item six H, discussion and possible action on adopting guidelines and criteria for the city of Godley tax abatement policy. It's been a hectic week, so I didn't get this done, Dean, do you wanna touch on this, or just?
Sure, I can. Yeah, so it looked like, uh, what Mayor Protem had provided to me was the Johnson County's tax abatement policy. So to, to the extent the city wants to start doing tax abatement, whether that be in, in industrial district, residential tax abatement, or basically to utilize that chapter, it's in three twelve of the tax, the tax code. You'll have to adopt guidelines and criteria first, so you could really match Johnson County's, and that's what a lot of cities will do, because sometimes you'll do tax abatement jointly, so you wanna, or a developer will try and do tax abatement with the city tax and the county. So you can do that, you can kinda do your own, tailor it to yourself. So, but for now, my understanding is that the city doesn't have its own guidelines and criteria for tax abatement.
So there's nothing to really take action on since I wasn't able to get it done. But I would like to discuss it, that's something that we're looking to do before I spend all that time doing it and spend money with the attorneys.
Uh, particularly myself, I'm not really in favor of a tax abatement.
Is a tax abatement something we use for the four B, or is that something we use for commercial to get businesses in? And we're currently using that, from what I understand already, so we're saying we don't have guidelines, how are we currently using that then?
Oh, I, I'm not aware of any city, do we have city guideline, guidelines? I saw the Johnson County ones.
I mean, are we do not, I mean, don't we currently have a couple of abatement programs going on?
So we have three eighty agreements?
Oh, okay.
Um. How do I touch on this? If we're gonna discuss the three eighty agreements, this should probably be done in executive session.
Okay, I mean, sometimes you might have a tax abatement incentive that's kinda wrapped into a three eighty agreement. But ordinarily, anytime, anytime you're doing tax abatement agreement, you're gonna be doing public hearings, posting notice, with a three eighty agreement, you're not required to do that. So there, so I don't know to what extent those three eighty agreements also have a tax abatement component. You might have like a, like a TERS reimbursement in your three.
We don't have any TERS, we do abate ad valorem taxes.
Oh, okay, yeah. We can talk, I mean, there's some other strategy here, you know, there's been some, some changes in state law as far as your ETJ is concerned, and so some municipalies are looking at identifying particular areas as industrial districts. And that's to avoid overreach from their perspective of counties wanting to come in and take over the ETJ. So that would probably be something you could do to coincide with your tax abatement guidelines and criteria, if you were to have a, a zone where you kinda wanna push industrial development. So, things to consider.
Well, we need industrial development.
Do we know if this is, I mean, I don't even know if this is, is a question, maybe I need to wait to, if that is in our plan? Industrial districts?
I mean, we're growing very rapidly, we're not just gonna be rooftops.
No, I mean, like, in our current plan that they've developed, is it, have they sectioned?
That's our comprehensive plan, I, I'm not sure, I've stayed out of that, so that way I just get presented it whenever y'all do.
Okay. But that's, that's something we need to look at and make sure that we have that.
Yeah, and, and industrial district isn't defined. So what is that, what does it mean, I mean, are they ag operations, is it, you know, light industrial, is it full-on industrial, is it Amazon? You know, data center, industrial, so I think there's a lot of ways you could look at that.
I mean, we have a commercial development coming in on one seventy-one. That's gonna be pretty large. That's Trinon's place.
Yeah.
There's, it's going to come, we're not gonna stay small-town Godley.
Whoa.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's questioning that, I, I didn't hear anyone say that.
So it's better to prepare now, put these policies in place, so that way if it does, and when it does come, rather than like we have for the past couple of years where they just did whatever they want.
We, we do, we need to. We need to manage ahead of it, instead of behind it, so I think doing this is, um, getting prepared for the what-if. And I would rather prepare for the what-if than not being, that wouldn't, weren't, we weren't prepared for some of this that's already came in, and I think getting ahead of it's the best option at this point.
You know, people buy houses, they pay taxes, they don't ever get an abatement. People who come in with the business is, oh, if you don't give me this to bait, I'm going to this other city. Go to the other city, if you wanna be here, pay the taxes.
Well, there, there, there's something else that we oughta, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but if we get a decent-sized industrial complex, let's say, then we, and we offer them an abatement, because honestly, it, you know, you're right, they're gonna leave if we don't, but if we, we, we should look at the potential loss of having this industrial complex, I mean, it provide, it keeps people here, their jobs are here. It offers, I think, an opportunity for business growth within the city, rather than you know, people leaving and going to Cleveland, and going to Home Depot, and Walmart, and all that, they stay here.
And sales tax.
Yeah, and the sales, we get the sales tax from it. And they're not forever, I mean, we don't, we don't, not necessarily, anyway, the abatements are for usually a restricted period of time, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Five, usually it's five to ten years, just depending on your criteria.
No more than ten. So you get to choose little zones that you want this in, it's not gonna be like, okay, right out here is gonna be Amazon, over there is gonna be Walmart distribution.
I, I understand, those are all great, they're, but they're gonna come, they're gonna come, if they want to, they oughta pay the same taxes everybody else pays. They shouldn't get they shouldn't, you know, they're gonna make money, therefore they make, they pay taxes, if they weren't, if they weren't gonna make money, they wouldn't be here.
Is it pretty standard, most cities offer some top of abatement to some commercial?
It'll, it'll make you competitive, um, I mean, when you're looking at the use, what's the useful life of a building, maybe thirty, forty years, something like that, so you have tax abatement for ten years. You know, a lot of, I'm seeing a lot of cities, what they'll do is they'll kind of confine it all to an area of the city that's outside of, like, what you would normally see, you know, housing, single-family dwelling, like main street areas, and those industrial districts will kind of, because you're, you're also talking about, it's not just the real property taxes, you're also talking about sales tax, so they might have like a sales component where they'll have a destination sales tax that will come from those industrial buildings as well, so you, it's not, I mean, you might abate a little bit here to get the big taxes. And then also the utility revenue that comes from servicing those properties.
And jobs.
So, I mean, they can be beneficial, some, I've seen little cities, what they'll do is they'll take it, put it out in a district, and then the rest of the city can benefit from all the tax, sales tax, ad valorem taxes generated, so even though they're kind of off in the distance in their industrial district, everybody over here in your single family, you know, where you wanna live, are all benefiting from all the taxes being produced.
Let's assume, uh, Amazon wants to come down here. They, Amazon could afford to fix every single road in this city, repave it concrete if they wanted to, I mean, obviously not something that, but that's another thing that can be worked into some of these agreements, along, you're not just yeah, the tax abatement is a loss of revenue, but along with that, you just maybe negotiate, hey, we, we got a bunch of roads, you guys fix those up for us, will you, or, or contribute to our wastewater utility plant, or whatever, you know, we might need at the time. A lot of times, these, you know, that's, that's just part of the game.
It may cost a short term, but long-term, it's, it's an investment. So that's, you kinda gotta look at it like that, it's like buying a house, I mean, you have to put down a percentage to get that house, but in the long-term, it's yours. And I think, I kinda look at bringing business in here, it's good for the taxes, it's good for the citizens, it's good for jobs. And if it costs us a little bit of a tax abatement, I mean, I think, I think it's worth it in the long run, 'cause we have a bunch of rooftops and no businesses here, I mean, that, that's not gonna be, I think, good for our community in general, I mean, because the growth is gonna happen, the land is gonna sell, the land's gonna be divided, I mean, it's gonna happen, and so at this point, it's what somewhat of controls we can put down on that to benefit the citizens in the long run, so.
Well, they're, they're gonna happen, that's why there's those, that's why I'd rather not give them a tax abatement. It gets to a point where it's not happening, to where businesses aren't coming, period, because there's no more rooftops, then you might think about an abatement. But right now, when you're a prime area, you don't abate it, because even if you say it, hey, would you do this, this, and this for me, sure, it's still gonna be less than they would get from their, from a, from their taxes, or it's something they can write off on their, on their business tax, on their business, uh, taxes. We're not gonna gain anything at this point, because we are growing and people want to be here by giving tax abatements now. Down the road, tax abatements may be good, good things, the only thing that you could eat, that I would see a benefit, would say we're gonna put everything at this point, or at this point, it's just spreading it out, but I don't see a reason to give a tax abatement to people that want to come here. 'Cause if they don't, somebody else will, there will be businesses here.
I don't wanna see this entire all across the entire. I don't wanna see this entire, all across the entire landscape, because Austin's about to screw us hard, if they haven't already. And we're not gonna have any control over lot sizes, square footage, and that's going to be a disaster. And so if I had the choice between that, because what's gonna happen there? Well, mom and dad come there, and you got maybe two, three, maybe four kids coming, because they could, that's your demographic now. That's gonna kill our schools. There's gonna be very little tax revenue, because those people aren't gonna shop here. They're gonna go to Cleveland. There's your Walmart, there's your Home Depot. They've got to, because they're paycheck to paycheck. So I would rather see, with that coming down the line, I think I might rather have some, you know, few hundred acres here and there, be large industrial complexes to just avoid that as.
And even if they're not industrial, commercial, I mean, it's still the same. I mean, I don't know if you're thinking big manufacturers. It doesn't have to be that. It can be a commercial district. I mean, we do have a commercial district that's about to be built, so we've already approved it, and it's, I mean, they're already asking for permits, so it's gonna happen.
Yes, it is gonna happen. That's why we probably need to give them a tax abatement.
So this policy isn't to like, so current abatements that we have right now are ridiculous. I mean, they're absolutely ridiculous.
The only thing I know about is that special is what you, we called it a minute ago, what you, you expressed, that was ridiculous.
Well, that, that's a whole nother issue on legalities, but, um, like we have a three-eighty agreement with Sonic Gateway Sixty. We have a three-eighty agreement with Bloomfield Homes. So.
I still don't understand.
What was done in the past, it's not great for us now, but with the policy, we can make future abatements something that we like.
My concern is that abatements are great. We can work with that. Why do we wanna give people abatements? They're gonna be here anyway.
Because if you give them, let's say, a twenty percent abatement, then you're gaining that eighty percent. Whereas if they don't come, you're losing that hundred percent.
If people are here, businesses are gonna come.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, no.
Not necessarily.
Look, they knew.
The reason Trinon is coming here, because he lives here and he wants the city, he's lived here forever, and he has a love for the city and wants to bring something good to it. Well, these people coming from the outside, they don't give a damn. I mean, excuse my language, they don't care what they're here to do. Okay, maybe they're not quite that. What they're here to do is, okay, we've researched this, this looks good. We got a highway here, we got another one here, we can get our trucks out, we got good bandwidth, we'll build here. Or we'll go to Cleveland. Who's gonna give us the best deal?
They'll come here if they want to. They're, they're gonna come, at some point in time, they're gonna come here anyway. That's all I'm saying.
Let's suppose we negotiate, let's suppose we negotiate tax abatement for six million dollars over ten years. And then we say, hey, Amazon, can you put six million dollars into our roads and fix them all up here? And they say, yeah.
I'm just saying, yeah, I understand what you're saying, that's fine. You can really have a Walmart or a Ranty B. That's what you're gonna get.
I think with larger companies, the more appealing companies, in a sense, they expect it. And it's just part of negotiating, getting the higher quality, um, businesses in here that are better for the community. Yeah, I mean, we can have everything pop up here, there, wherever, but in order to attract the ones that the community need for jobs and, and everything, we need to have, we're not saying we're gonna abate for fifteen years, but we need that negotiating power to do it if we need to. But it doesn't mean every single business that comes in here gets a tax abatement, and that's what seems to have been happening.
The next, the next ones are gonna want one.
Well, that's all part of the negotiating process.
Doesn't matter what they want, it's what we all can negotiate down to.
All right, so let me, let me bring some tax abatement policies from other areas back to y'all. Next couple of meetings, we'll look at them, and then we'll vote. We don't have anything to vote on tonight, so give y'all a better idea, a better understanding.
Is this a no-action item then?
Yes.
Make motion for no action on item six H.
Second, Ed.
Got a motion and a second for no action. Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item six I, discussion on the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, city administrator. This time, council will go into executive session for item six I pursuant to five fifty-one dot oh seven four, discussion on the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, city administrator.
It is twenty-three fifteen, two-three-one-five, show us coming out of executive session. Item six I, discussion on the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or city administrator. I make a motion for no action.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item six J, discussion and possible action on approving their repairs submitted by Johnson County Automotive for the two thousand and six Ford F-150. So in your packet you'll find the repair estimate that they gave months ago.
Why are we repairing it? I thought we weren't gonna do that. What's the deal now? We need it?
So I've looked at all of the city's assets and Public Works needed a vehicle.
Is this a diesel?
No, it is a gas motor. So Public Works needed a vehicle, Fire Department needs a new vehicle for, to replace the rescue unit. So I took the utility truck from the Fire Department, the white F-250. I moved it over to Public Works for them to use in the time being. The goal is to move a, one of the red F-150s to their squad instead of running an engine everywhere for medicals. So permanently they'll keep the F-250 which they need, it's a diesel. Can pull their trailers, pull their tractors, whatever they need. The F-150 that was the emergency management vehicle, the one in question, will go back to emergency management. Because come to find out, we have an emergency management trailer that we could have been using on this wildfire, and we couldn't, because we didn't have a truck to pull it. So I and my wife are using our vehicle to go back and forth hauling coolers and food. Whenever, we could have just stuck it all in trailer and kept it out there, they would have had unlimited resources. I don't think we need to spend the entire amount because there's stuff in here that can easily be changed. Like windshield wipers. There is definitely some stuff that I'd rather have a mechanic do. And he said that we don't need to do it all. But he wanted to give that option.
Is the truck stuck where it is?
You have to jump it off.
So we couldn't take, we can take it to reverse turn and let them give us a bid?
Yes.
I would like to do that.
Like Kevin asked if he needs to have their stuff emptied out and it brought over here and I was like, no, I'm not worried about it right now. I was like, if it gets approved, then we'll worry about it then. I mean, but I'm with you, I'll gladly take it to two or three different spots, and that's always been the norm for us as a council.
Yes.
But as soon as we jump it off, we take it there, then it's dead. We gotta jump it off again to bring it back.
Is it the battery that's bad or the alternator?
Uh, they quoted a battery replacement. But I don't know, I went down there and looked at the truck, it's not in bad condition. It'd be great as an emergency management truck. It's paid off, it's older. I mean, you don't need some fancy new vehicle.
Yeah, let's, I mean, spark plug replacement, six hundred and eight dollars and four cents? Crap, I'll do it for five.
If you can get to all of them.
Bet I can, for five hundred bucks.
I think we had a problem with past councils doing that.
Looks like the thing's not even roadworthy from this bid. Front brake rotors, rear brake pad and rotors, brake system service, lower ball joints, good grief. Transmission service, differential fluid repl- Differential fluid replacement front. Four-wheel drive?
I don't think so.
Let's take it over to reverse turn and see what they say.
I mean, it may be, I didn't look it to see if it had hubs.
I just, I'd like to go to reverse turn, just, or somebody else, just to get a competitive bid, just to make sure we're that's what we should do with everybody, we shouldn't just go to one person.
Yeah, they want seventy-five bucks to put the differential fluid in the front.
If it leaks, it flows to the back.
There you go.
So if I take it to reverse turn, what do y'all, I, I put this in here so we can look over it and say, okay, yeah, let's approve the battery replacement if that's the issue, let's approve the rotor replacement. I mean, I don't think, I'm pretty sure we can handle changing wiper blades.
Yes.
I don't think we need to pay fifty bucks or forty-one bucks for that.
Does the, uh, Fire Department work on, we used to change our oil and do all that stuff, they still do that over there, or do they take it? Somebody?
It's taken, I believe, to somewhere, usually Johnson County Automotive.
Why don't we take, why don't we go, take it over to reverse turn, let them give us a bid, and then we'll compare and see what each one wants to do, if there's common items, then we'll decide then. Surely there will be, I mean, I hope so anyway.
Is there another automotive store besides Johnson County and reverse turn?
I mean, there's mom and pops, there's mom and pops. Type places.
I don't think there's, yeah, that's true, but that is true. But, you know, reverse turn is I think ought to be an option for us, they're in the city limits, the city sales tax and all that good stuff, no? Are they not?
That's county right there. Even though coyote crossing city limits right behind it.
Well, at least go there and get another bid, if we wanna take it over to Sam, you said?
Yeah.
Then we'll get a third bid. But I don't like the idea of replacing the front differential fluid when there's not a front differential on the, on the machine.
I mean, it may be four-wheel drive, but I-
I hope so.
Wouldn't-
I hope so.
I don't know, if I had a way to look up the vehicle, then I'd tell you right now, but
Well, there's the VIN, you got the VIN right there, you probably could, but either way.
So y'all want it taken to a couple different places?
So for item six J, what do we need to do here, Dean? I mean, this isn't-
Just direction?
Direction. All right, make a motion to direct staff to take the Ford over to, um, reverse turn for another bid. Second that.
I got a motion and a second for staff direction to take from additional bids. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously. Anybody have any community interest items?
Yes. September nineteenth at seven PM in Cleburne. I forget the address, but they're doing a, TCEQ is doing a public hearing for the mud that's coming in uh, down on the old Crowder Dairy at, at twelve thirty-two Highway four. So we got an opportunity, they're gonna do a permit hearing, we have an opportunity. Uh, there's a big effort from some high-powered folks to try to get that stopped. Good grief, this is a recorded meeting, I'm not gonna just blow it, but anyway, if we can get some citizens down there to voice their opinion too.
It's the nineteenth at seven PM at the Cleburne Conference Center.
Yeah, that's it. Maybe even have a city council member or two go down there if we changed our regular meeting day. But that'll be up to y'all. Anyway, that's my community interest item. Yes, Mr. Cooper?
Um, I can help with getting some groups down there specifically, five months, if you just don't really forget. And just so you guys know, there's another one gonna be going in somewhere soon, up on twenty-three thirty-one called Belmont. And in the development agreement, it has mandatory annexation into the city.
You talking about Dove Valley?
What's that?
Talking about Dove Valley or Belmont?
Belmont.
Belmont.
So something we didn't look at, um, in the other one, we'll get some of the development agreements and see if they while they were annexed into the ETJ, then this stuff got approved, there was also a future upon completion of development annexation into the city, so I'm still looking into that, but it's just something else that you can eye on, because mud is much, uh, just-
Yep, I just saw that with the Dove Valley one.
Is that the one that's south of the valley?
It's up north, north of twenty-three thirty-one and ten oh four.
I'll look at it closer, I just started looking.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? I'll second that. I got a motion and a second, Scott?
Aye.
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 Passed unanimously.